Your recommendation to adopt the agenda as presented in putting any all in there too?
So move second.
Bob and Mark, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Candycar.
Aye.
Mr. Sappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Yakovozie.
Aye. Good news report. Beth.
All right. Couple of things I want to show you today. Well, if you walk into the Harris lobby right now, you'll see that everything is awesome. Everything is cool when you go to Harris Elementary. We have our Fine Arts Night coming up this week. It's going to be Wednesday night from 5:00 to 7:00 at Harris, so if you're free, I suggest you stop on over. Fine Arts Night is always really cool because this is where both music and art come together. So in music class, our students have been working with Mrs. Grace in 4th grade on learning to play the recorder. I'm sure you have children that have played the recorder, or maybe you've played it with your kids. They work beautiful music in great, so really it does. They do a really nice job. Mrs. Grace does a program with the students called Recorder Karate, and you'll see my friend there in the bottom corner who got his green belt, because they move up to the different belt colors as they progress through. So they're going to do a nice job. So our 4th graders will be playing some recorder music, and then our hallways are going to be full of beautiful art that the students have been doing with Mrs. Lee. So she's been putting it up these past couple of weeks, and they're super excited about it. So if you're available, Wednesday night from 5:00 to 7:00, I encourage you to stop on over, check it out. The other thing that I wanted to talk to you about tonight was not as pretty and fun, but it's important. So I'm going to close my iPad here for a second. So, over the years, one thing that all educators know is that our kids come to us and we want them to learn amazing things, but sometimes they have so many things going on at home and in their personal life that they have to deal with all of that before they can learn those amazing things that we want to work with them on. So we've worked with Firelands Counseling for a couple of years now. We've done where they've gone into some of our special education classrooms to do some social skills units and things like that, where they've done one-on-one counseling sessions with kids. But in talking with our staff this year, we realized there was a greater need, that we really needed to address this with our students. We wanted to be able to support them not only academically, but emotionally. And so we've been working with two wonderful ladies from Firelands, and they have come in and created these groups for us. And students join the group based on recommendation, and they have to have parent permission to be a part of the group, so parents know what's going on. But Melissa has been leading one of our groups, and it's just been really cool to watch, because I get to see it, you know, looking out at the big picture, and I have teachers that have come to me and said, you know, since that student was in Melissa's group, they're able to deal with things much better than they used to. And I think some of the other students that used to get so upset about things, and I would be talking to them so frequently, and I told Melissa, there's some kids that I don't have to do that anymore, because she's really given them some great tools to work with. And so I invited the ladies from Firelands here, so they could tell you a little bit about those groups. And I think it's a really awesome thing, and mental health is really important. So Penny and Melissa, do you want to come on up?
Hello, my name is Penny Morgan. I'm the coordinator of outpatient services at Firelands, and really coordinate all the school services in this place that we're involved in. I've worked in lots of different counties, and in working in Lorain County, it's very exciting, because your mental health board here in Lorain County is very, very supportive of having mental health services in the schools. So I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of what the mental health board really tries to promote and cover in the schools. So they will provide education, prevention, and consultation in the schools. So we can in the schools, and we can provide different types of educational programs or topics. I went in and talked to different schools on school anxiety, social anxiety, ADHD. A therapist went in and educated staff on LGBT issues. So they really promote that educational piece, and then they really want those prevention groups to take place in the schools. So we've done social skills, self-esteem groups, grief groups, anger management groups. And then we, the mental health board also promotes consultation. So if there are students that are identified as, you know, they're just not doing very well, they're really struggling, we can come in and observe them, talk to the staff, the teachers, meet with the parents, and then provide recommendations based on the information that we gather. So those are the, the things that the mental health board really wants us to offer the schools, and I think it's a wonderful service that they provide all the funding for, so. So Melissa is in Harris, and she has ran a couple of groups. So she's going to talk to you just a little bit about those specific groups.
My name is Melissa, I'm the therapist that goes into Harris. This year I did two social skills groups. It's smaller groups, both male and female. I tend to do four main topics, and then I tailor it towards the needs of each kid. So we do foundations of feelings, identifying and expressing feelings. Then we talk about anger, different levels of anger, different intensities, and how to cope with those anger feelings. Then we go into problems that they might be having in school or at home, so we do some conflict resolution, how to be a good student, and then how to be a good friend. So those are like the main topics, and then I do different activities, hands-on activities. We do feeling charades. I try to be really interactive with the students, and then tailor it towards, you know, what they might need. So if I have a kid that, majority of the kids are very anxious, then we'll try to do maybe two sessions on anxiety and how to cope with anxiety. If it's ADHD, then we tend to focus more on impulse control and controlling ourselves. Self-esteem groups we've done, so we'll focus more on friendship. So it's all based off the needs of the students that are recommended to us. That's what I've been doing at Harris.
Yeah, they've done a great job, and we're, we feel very fortunate that we have them as a resource to use. I mean, what a great thing to have, because, you know, our students need that, and it truly is making a difference. So I wanted you to hear how awesome that is. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Are we only doing that at the Harris level?
Um, no. Penny, or Melissa, you have a group at Nord as well, right?
I do. I have a group at Nord, and I also have a group at the junior high.
The reason I asked is because one of my sons was in the junior high, and by the time he got to that, they finally figured out what was going on, and I told him, give him detention if he's not acting up. He looked at me like I had a third eye, but they figured out what was going on, so that's good to hear.
Yeah.
That they're trying to figure it out at the younger age.
Yep, yeah, I think it's really important.
Thank you.
We also provide individual counseling in the schools as well. So if there's an identified student that would just really benefit from some additional one-on-one counseling, and some family counseling, then we can also do that in the schools as well.
Yeah, and that's a very nice option for parents, you know, because you get some parents and they just get to the point where they're like, I don't know what else to do. And so to be able to say, here, Firelands is an option, and you can take your child to them, or they can come to the school, and that's really nice for parents to have that available.
Thank you.
That service is great. Thank you for doing it. Just wondering, do you extend that service to out-of-control board members?
Sure, we can take care of that. We'll get right on that. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Beth?
Yes.
Does that have to, does the student have to be recommended by a teacher to get in this program?
Either teacher or parents.
Okay.
Yeah, yep, and then there's always a permission slip, like I said, so parents always know what's going on.
And where is the couns, where is Firelands Counseling actually located?
We're located on Love it Road, right behind McDonald's. So we're right right behind McDonald's.
I just didn't, I mean, I've heard of it, but I didn't know where you were located.
Willoughby Woods.
Yep.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to give a shout out to Melinda DeBrango, who noticed it six years ago, but she was the one that helped us out, figured it out, picked up on the subtleties that we were going through, so that was a blessing to us.
Those caring eyes make a lot of difference.
So thank you again.
Thank you again.
Thanks. Barbara, Steve, you want to comment on item 6?
No, this is just, it's required by law. We're required to have a public hearing, which gives anyone publicly the opportunity to comment on our federal grant program, and how those funds are to be used, and what's a program that Mr. Molnar along with Sarah Walker, that they oversee and administer those grant funds, and of course, they work very closely with Barb. But again, this is an opportunity for the public to comment if they have a desire to do so.
About number 7 in Congress, you want to comment on that?
Again, same idea as required by law. Whenever we're considering a retire-rehire situation in the same position, we're required to have a public hearing, make it, give the public an opportunity to comment, and as the boards are aware, we're in the process of considering a retire-rehire for Mark Coaster, who actually is here tonight, our technology supervisor. We think it makes a lot of sense as we look at this transition here that we're going to be going through over the next two years, preparing for the opening of the new elementary school. So we will have, most likely, at the next board meeting, a personnel action for you to consider retiring Mark's reemployment. And of course, as we've done with other cases, this has always done at a significant cost savings and salary benefits to the taxpayer. So we will work on providing that recommendation for the next meeting.
Thank you. There's no one to sign up to address the board, we're just going to move right on to the Treasury report. Barb?
Actually, I have a Treasury report I'd like to give you, but it's from all of us that had the opportunity to go to Chicago, as we had spoke before prior board meetings, that we will plan to make a trip to Chicago to present to Moody's for a rating, a bond rating. The district currently had a bond rating in the past, but we had no current bonds at the time, so we were going to Moody's to be able to present a little bit about our district. Of course, the ones that have heard it ongoing would know that we, with Lorain County as a whole, and a lot goes into the bond rating, we went there basically to share all the things that are happening in Amherst School District, and we had, we had good news. We had a good story to tell, and we were very proud to go there. The one thing that helps to go present face-to-face with a rating company is you're able to share the good things, answer questions that they might have, and it was so important to go because based on everything they grade, without hearing everything, we could possibly have been downgraded with everything they grade upon. And downgrading as a bond rating, the different rating you have drives your interest rate, and the interest rate that we would receive with our current rating and not be downgraded is important. If we would have been downgraded, the district could have lost $700,000, an estimate of $700,000. So a lot of good things happened. We went there, I want to thank Mr. Yakovozie for going along, and Mr. Stares went, and I went, and we each had a section of the presentation, which went very well, and we were proud when we left, and it all paid off. We got the report from Moody's this week, and we kept our AA2, which we were very excited about that. The next step up is a AA1, and those districts have a larger value, value in their district. So to be at that level, we'd have to grow quite a bit. So we were pleased to hold our AA2 that we have had in the past. Good news with, we're going to go to the market now. We're all set to go price our bonds and sell our bonds for the project. The first bond sale will be May 2nd, so our 2017 series, and then the second bond issue will be May 18th. And as the board asked prior about being able to purchase some of those bonds, or the community could be able to purchase those, I do have the information for that, and a broker out of Westlake will be handling that. It'll be on the district's website, I just received that today, so I'll pass it on to Mr. Molnar to put out there. And of course, it's not on there, but I think you can go in increments of $5,000 for the bond. So we're, as of right now, the financial plan that Mr. Stares and I brought to the Board of Education with issuing the notes and moving forward the bond sale, it looks like we're on track for that, and you never know on pricing day what happens to the market, but right now, everything is great and good to go. We're ahead of schedule with that, so we're excited about that. I can't say enough good about our trip, and I'm very pleased and excited for the district because our, our plan that we brought to the boards, gosh, a while back, to issue the ballot, that we were fortunate that it passed, and we sold that ballot issue as no new taxes, and as of right now, that will be the case. It'll go through with what our financial plan was, and it, and we're very proud of that. So the other things that I have on the agenda tonight for the board to take into consideration, I'll talk a little bit about UNIS one more time, if I may, and we are getting closer to that. We did happen to close January, we closed it late Friday afternoon, and there was not reports out there yet to put together, so that, that is coming February, right on its tails down. We're still waiting for one last item for connect and UNIS to work on, and that's our outstanding checks. They, the checks that came over in the conversion did not load properly, so we tracked them manually, balanced the books, so we do have that balanced for January, and hopefully, by the time we come back in May, we'll have all the months for the board. So I appreciate your patience, and, and like I said, our operations is still running. Every day, we're in and out, payroll's running fine, our account's payable and paying, our vendors are running fine, we have no issue with that. It's just compiling the reports that we need and making everything work with the month in. So we're on that right track. The other things that I have on the agenda tonight is I do not have the financial report, and I do not have any 412 certificates, so I will bring them to the board, because they're based off of our financial reports next month. I have the resolution adopting the donation agreement regarding the transfer of these rights in conjunction with agreement with the city of Amber City regarding the storm and water mitigation that you guys approved. There was one more piece to it that did not get finalized, and that's on here this evening for you to approve. We also have the resolution accepting the amounts and rates, and this is done every year. It starts with the tax budget, and it determines our current value each year that we have, and the county auditor meets with the budget commission, and they set the amounts of rate, amounts and rates based on our district value, and then we get them approved, and it goes back, and that starts, that starts our budget process for the next school year. I also have a couple donations, and we're always very pleased for the donations. Powers Elementary received from Powers PTO, $13,479.90 to be used to purchase, to be used for the purchase of mini iPads and two charging carts for Powers Elementary, which we're always pleased for that, because of the learning that kids are doing, they're using them quite often. We also have Linda Dolan and a couple other staff members worked with her, and she received the Centric Lee Clark M. Williams Foundation Grant in the amount of $5,000, and we were excited about that, and they're always excited to apply for these grants to be able to add additional instructional things into the classroom. So if, if I may, I would ask the board to approve treasures items, 9A through 9...
10.
I'm sorry. 10A through 10F.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion?
IMB, I don't think should be on there, because we haven't seen that, which is the month of March, and it's not going to close, is it?
No, that should be on there. We had put it on there, because we were going to get it.
I think it was going to be there. So IMB should be withdrawn.
Right, Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Bob, did you say also that the 412 certificate?
It should be removed as well, because if you don't have signed it.
Okay, so B and C.
Yes.
So it's A, D, E, and F.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Candycar.
Aye.
Mr. Angle.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Sappa.
Aye.
Mr. Yakovozie.
Aye. And if I may for a moment, I know you're going to, you're going to probably say a couple of things about it too, but Barb is being rather humble regarding presentation in Chicago. That was an incredible experience. I've, I've made presentations before, but never one like this one. This was stressful, I'm going to tell you. I've made presentations, chairman of the board of Ford Motor Company, many, many, many years ago, and that was a piece of cake. This thing here was tough. I mean, I don't know how many hours we spent preparing for it. Even in Chicago, we spent, the day we got there, at least four hours reviewing and making sure every, every I was done and T was crossed. And we sat before two young guys, probably in their early 30s, at the best, early 30s, and these guys were sharp. They were not slouches, they all had master's degrees, these guys knew what they were doing. And we each, it was a two-hour presentation of non-stop between myself, Barb, and Steve, and I got to tell you, these two did an amazing job doing what they had to do. At the end of the presentation, our bond counsel was there, and he's done this, he's been, he's been in many, many, many presentations before Moody's, both in New York as well as Chicago, and his comment was at the end, he said, just, our presentation was absolutely incredible, is what he used, it was probably one of the best ones he's ever seen, and he asked if we had rehearsed ahead of time, which we didn't. We just studied our stuff and knew what we were talking about. He said he couldn't, couldn't believe how it flowed from me to Barb to Stephen, back and forth. We had a conversation between the three of us, basically, for two hours, telling our story about Amherst, everything from, you know, when I first came to Amherst when I was 10 years old, all the way up to where it is today, what's going to be monkey.
It's going to.
And five-year, five-year forecast that Barb and Steve put together, and our financial strength is incredible. Our financial strength was actually rated as a triple A, which is unheard of in school districts for the most part, but because of Lorain County and certain demographics and declining enrollment and things like that, it took us down to a AA2. The key again was getting no less than a AA2 going in this thing. We were on the cusp of perhaps going to a AA3, that, as Barb said, would have cost us $700,000 over 25 years, which would not, would not have been good. The good thing is, we were able to maintain it. We weren't even going to try for a AA1, because there was just the, Lorain County in and to itself, because of who we are and what Lorain County is, it just wasn't going to work for us. So bottom line is, they were very impressed. The bond rating analysts who were there usually don't make much of a comment, and when they were, we were finished, they did comment and say that they were very impressed, and that they told us right in and there, that they had, they really saw no problem with us keeping our AA2 rating. So they were very impressed, and I want to thank Barb and Steve publicly and personally for one hell of a job, knowing, knowing your stuff, getting in there, and letting these guys know what Amherst is all about. And it just wasn't about financials. We talked about the town, the downtown area, the growth that's going on, potential growth coming on. We talked about medical, all the medical facilities in the area, all the employers in the area. It was a very intense, comprehensive report that covered Amherst from head to toe. I don't think we missed uncovering one rock. Everything was really well done, so, and again, thank you both for what you did. Appreciate it, all right?
And if I may add to that, please.
Sure.
And Mr. Yakovozie being humble, because he did just as well, or as excellent as the rest of us, and I will make sure that, that the board knows that you paid for your entire trip yourself.
I did.
You didn't have to do that, you were representing the district. So thank you very much.
I paid for it all, Jase, leaving my meals. All right. Say something.
We'll give him a gold star.
Anyway, it was, it was a great experience.
We're running those stars from the school that we're supposed to get.
But I might add that, I might add that Amherst has never had a new score. It used to be that you could purchase an insurance policy that would pretty much take you to the rating you wanted. The rules changed over the last few years, and now you have to do these presentations. They don't recommend doing it by Skyping, they want you there in person. It makes a huge difference, because they can feel, touch, and smell you, okay, versus doing it via Skype. So it worked extremely well. We did have to have our, one of our, our underwriter, I'm not sure where she was, but she was talking by phone in this room, it was a large conference room, and they had speakers in the ceiling, like eight speakers in the ceiling. So when she talked, it was like, like, well, as they described, like God talking, it was hilarious. And at one point, the bond counsel sat there and said, we were all done talking, he said, now, God, you want to say anything? And we spoke, and the place busted out. But it was, it was extremely well done, and a hell of an experience. If you ever get a chance to do one of them, do it. But, good, thank you. Well, they, they made me go first. Not enough pressure. He said, you got to go first and set the tone and the pace for the meeting. I said, geez, thanks, you know? So I think I unloaded on them. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Ron, and I too just want to echo, but it's already been said, Barb and Ron just did a fabulous job, and it was very much a team effort, and it was one of those things that I, I shared with a few people since the trip, that it was a lot of work preparing for this, and I don't know, we haven't sat down to add up the number of hours that went into the preparation, but a lot of work, but it was a lot of fun at the same time, to be able to, to be there and to talk about the Amherst and our school district, our community, in terms of where we've been, where we are, and where we're headed. It was just an exciting and fun story to tell. And so it was, it, everything worked out the way we wanted it to work out, so I too again want to say thank you to Barb and Ron. And Ron mentioned finances and being such a, you know, key part of our rating, I want to take this opportunity to mention again just how important this renewal levy is, because that was actually a question that was asked at the, you know, at the presentation by the analysts, but this renewal levy, as we've talked before, is a key, key piece to our long-term financial stability. It's five-year renewal levy, of course, as you know, will not increase taxes, but it's very, very important that we renew this levy in order to maintain that long-term financial stability. So we're hoping that everyone gets out there next Tuesday and exercises their right to vote, and we hope our residents choose to support our schools and our students and what's happening here, and certainly, any conversations you have with friends and neighbors and, and folks that you run into in the community between now and next Tuesday, make sure you take advantage of the opportunity to emphasize to folks exactly how important this issue is to us, because as you know, it's a primary election. Voter turnout is expected to be obviously much less than it was in November, so it's very, very important that folks get out and exercise their right to vote. I did want to highlight the importance of this renewal levy once again.
I'd like to point out too, these bond rating analysts zeroed right in on that, this levy coming up, they zeroed in on it, because they don't like temporary or re, or emergency type levies, they want to see permanent, because they know, in their mind, the need is always there. So when they see a temporary or emergency levy on the ballot, to them, that, that actually helps, that helps them make a decision in terms of giving you a lesser score in their scoring formula to, when they give you the final bond rating. So had that been a permanent levy, that probably would have been beneficial to us. Like Steve said, it's important that that does get renewed, it's critical.
A couple of other things I just wanted to highlight, just a quick construction update. I know Ron and Teresa and our buildings and grounds committee are well aware of these things, but wanted to share with everyone else, a lot has happened, obviously, since our last meeting in March, and we had that educational visioning exercise that was led by our architects in, in early April, I want to say it was April 5th or something like that, but it was a great, great day. Ron and Teresa both had the opportunity to be there, we had staff members there, we had custodians there, we had teachers there, we had administrators there, we had community members. Dave McCartney was there for part of the day, we had representative from the Amherst Fire Department, and it was, it was a great, great day talking about, you know, the future, you know, in terms of this new school building, and what we want to see in that building, and how it will facilitate learning here in the 21st century. So that went very, very well, and as a follow-up to that, we actually, this evening at 7:00, our architects will be here to basically make themselves available and listen to any ideas, suggestions, input, anyone from the community would like to share, you know, this evening at 7:00 PM, actually right here in this space. So again, we promoted that through Facebook, it's been on our website, we've got an email blast, and so again, our architects will be here. The community engagement is very, very important to us, and obviously to our architects as well. The other thing is, they're going to actually be here all day tomorrow in this very space, and what we've been able to do is work out kind of a rotating schedule, so that... and what we've been able to do is work out kind of a rotating schedule, so that at various times throughout the day, our, our various, uh, kind of groups of staff will be able to stop in here and share their thoughts and ideas. For example, we have our tech department, uh, will have an opportunity to stop in tomorrow morning, I think it is, we have a, a session here towards our custodial staff, uh, food service staff, um, our secretaries and teacher aid, support staff, the teachers. So we've got a schedule throughout the day, uh, you know, for those folks at Powers and Harris, again, a chance for them to stop by and spend a little bit of time with their architects just to share their ideas. So that, that will be happening tomorrow. Um, you know, in terms of kind of getting ready for next year, there's a lot happening with, you know, transition, and preparing for demo, and moving the modulators and, and those types of things, but, uh, uh, we are planning, um, as of right now, to have both the Harris Building and the Shute Building, uh, vacated and ready to be turned over, uh, to our construction manager, uh, for demolition. Uh, we have to have those buildings ready to go by July 1st. And, uh, so we are, we are on track, and, uh, we're working towards that goal, and then, of course, there's an abatement process that takes place before the actual demolition takes place, um, but those plans are being implemented. A big part of that, and this is an item that's on the agenda tonight, uh, is an online auction. And we've, again, as I've shared with the board before, um, it's been interesting going through this process, I've never been through a, a building, a project of this magnitude, and it's been interesting talking with other districts who have been through the process, and one of the things we've been able to pick up is the idea of an online auction, uh, versus a traditional auction. And, uh, so we, uh, actually are, are trying to finalize some of those details, and there's a company out there, uh, who does just that, online auction, and the plans are, again, we don't have all the details and dates and those kinds of things, we should have those ironed out by the end of the week, uh, but that idea would be that the first week in June, uh, we would have an online auction, and, uh, make those items in the building available to the public. There will be, uh, notice given to the newspaper, uh, of course, we'll advertise on the website, you know, those types of things, but, uh, that seems to make a lot of sense, the idea of an online auction. So, that is being worked through, and, and then you will see an item on the business service section that authorizes, uh, Board President, Superintendent, Treasurer, uh, you know, authorize us to move forward, to work out those details, to enter into a contract to make all the necessary, uh, you know, announcements and advertisements to the public so that we can get that done, um, in early June, because we are, when you think about two months from now, basically two months from now, we need to have those buildings ready, ready to go, so there's a lot of work to be done between now and then. But things are on track, I just wanna commend everyone, our teachers, our administrators, our custodians, our support staff, the staffing processes went very, very well, uh, preparing for these moves and the modulators and, and all those things. Uh, there's just a lot going on, but, but folks are excited, and everybody's pitching in and doing their part, and, uh, at the end of the day, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna have a good, good thing here with this new elementary school, and, uh, as I shared, it's the state of schools, you know, we're, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be tough these next two years, and we're asking for a little bit of patience, because it won't be normal. Uh, we'll be in a transition phase, um, but we know we're working towards, and at the end of the day, uh, we'll have a brand-new elementary school, and, uh, it, it'll be a good thing. So, uh, again, just wanna let the board know that everyone is doing a great job in preparing for all the work that needs to happen this summer. And that concludes my report.
I wanna point out too, the architects, and, and some of us have already gone to Shute and Harris, right?
Yes.
Did they go through Powers? I don't remember that.
Yes.
I couldn't go through the other two, I went to Shute. Uh, the plaques that are there, the memorial plaques by some of the trees, the plaques on the schools when they were first put in, those kind of types of things are being taken out of those buildings before demolition and will be incorporated somehow into the new facility. They'll be there, even to the point, there were some sandstone blocks, chunks, you know, where it's Shute I saw, he wrote it down, he's gonna pick those up and move them over, they might put them into like a, a garden area, or, those things are too expensive. So Victor?
And, and there will be, uh, also, to your point, Ron, thank you for mentioning that, that will be worked into the bid, the demo, uh, bid package, of course, which is being coordinated not only for our architects, but also, you know, this is a state project, uh, so the state is, is helping fund that. The work into that bid, uh, package will be salvaging, uh, one pallet, uh, of, of bricks, and I think.
Her building, right?
Yeah, her building. Uh, so we'll have that for Harris, we'll have that for Shute, and I wanna say there was like 530 or 540 bricks, uh, on a pallet, so, so that will be taken care of, we'll have those set aside, and of course, it'll be a couple of years before that Powers building comes down. Uh, but again, that's something they're used to doing, they know how that works, and, uh, you know, that's being taken into consideration as well.
And that would bring up a point that I'm bringing to the foundation, because they've asked me, uh, most recently at their meeting, if those bricks are available to them to raise money for the foundation.
Absolutely.
And if so, if those bricks, when can they get those bricks? And, so we'll let them know when they would be available, so that they can take them and have control of them, so they're just not randomly distributed, because the goal is to raise money for their educational foundation with those bricks from all three schools as time progresses, so.
Yeah, that actually, just talked to Mr. Coleman about that the other day, is your word, Mr. Coleman's kind of our liaison to the foundation, we just had this conversation, uh, he will be notifying, uh, the foundation, uh, of, of that opportunity, and those, uh, that fundraising opportunity will be available to the foundation, and we don't know the timeframe, you know, it, it depends on the abatement process, you know, if the abatement process takes a month, and then the demolition starts August 1st, it would be shortly thereafter that the bricks would be available. But once we know when the actual demo will take place and when the bricks will be available, uh, you know, obviously, at that point, uh, we, we can, uh, start, start working with the foundation on that fundraising.
And the follow-up question then, I'm sure is going to be, is there a place that those bricks can be stored? Does the foundation have to find a place to store those bricks?
We'll, we'll find a place. In fact, that was the email we received from Aaron today, one of our architects, uh, he said, "We've got, uh, one pallet of bricks that we'll have set aside for each building, he says, 'Remember, you have to find a place to store.'"
Okay. Because I know that the, I have received a couple emails from the Chair of the Foundation asking those questions, and I said that we'd be back to them, either Ryan or myself would be back to him about that as they proceed, so I guess, that's great.
We did a little use of chisel.
I, I have a question, um, can you talk a little bit about the start times of the different schools when we're going through the transition, and, and the times, these are just temporary while we're going through this transition, correct?
Yeah, actually, we have, uh, and thank you for mentioning that, I should've mentioned that in my report, we actually have a transition meeting that will take place tomorrow at NOR, uh, six o'clock, for, uh, for, for Snore will be grades three, four, and five the next school year, and Mr. Miller, uh, will be there to talk about not only start times, but also Kathy Moyer will be there as, as well, uh, to talk about transportation and bus routing and, and all those kinds of things. And then, actually, we have a similar meeting, uh, we had to reschedule it because of a, uh, facility conflict, but the, a similar meeting will take place with Amherst Junior High a week from Wednesday, which I think is the 3rd of May, uh, again, transition kind of meeting. But what we're doing, the start times, um, are remaining the same for next school year. And, and what we're doing is, uh, that we've really, uh, and Mike knows this, he's been at many of these meetings, where we've had a lot of conversations in terms of the transition plan and its impact on transportation and bus routes, its impact on scheduling, uh, we have staff members, for example, that are shared, as you know, between two buildings, either maybe NOR part of the day, Junior High part of the day, uh, so what we decided to do after a lot of conversation and a lot of, uh, you know, kind of reviewing, is this, we thought it was best, uh, during this, um, you know, transition, to keep the times as they are now, and then, you know, we may have to make some minor adjustments, obviously, whenever you're into a transition like this, you know, certain things we're gonna, you know, the first couple of weeks of school, we may have to, you know, tweak some routes or, or make some minor adjustments, uh, but the idea is that for the junior high, the high school, uh, NOR and Powers, those times will remain exactly as they are for this year, and then two years from now, as we're preparing to hopefully do elementary, uh, we'll make any adjustments that we need to at that point in time.
So you're telling me that the third graders, that whatever time they start now will be the same as next year?
The, the, no.
That's different.
The NOR time.
The school.
The school time.
Not the grades, okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Yes, the school time, the school times are remaining the same.
Okay, so my other question is, how many students can fit into NOR? I mean, what is the capacity?
We, uh...
An estimate?
I, I would say 750.
And how many children will we have there during the transition?
At NOR, roughly 730.
So we have plenty of room?
And, and that's including the use of modulars.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, and there, it was, I, I, actually, I ran into, uh, I think it was Mr. Weirson that maybe had shared with me, I was talking to him in the la, last fall, I ran into him in a meeting, and we were talking about the transition plan, and, uh, we were talking about NOR and how it was gonna be crowded the next couple of years with the money, he goes, "Oh," he said, "we've had well over 700 in that building before," when it was the junior high.
Right, and, and.
Which really precipitated, because of the crowding at NOR, having well over 700 students, that precipitated the bond issue that resulted in the new junior high school.
Well, I think some people are concerned the fact that, you know, the building was only really built for two, for two grades, and we're gonna have, it's gonna be way too crowded, but when you think of the numbers and what the capacity is, we're, we're still under.
Well, we'll, yes, because there was, as the board can remember, when we were going through crowding back in the late 90s and early 2000, our, our grade, I mean, we were 350, 360, 370, so yes, even though we've got three grades in NOR next year, those three grade levels are roughly, you know, 240, 250 versus the two grade levels that are there, of 350, 360, 370 students, so, yeah, it's, it's, again, it's gonna be tight and it's gonna be crowded, uh, but certainly very, very doable, very doable.
Thank you.
But I would encourage anyone, obviously, uh, we've been advertising, you know, through Facebook and our website and, and media and different things, at those transition meetings, anybody has any questions about, you know, transportation or any of those building kinds of procedural things, uh, you know, to attend, uh, you know, either NOR or the junior high, that's where most of the changes are taking place.
We told about.
For a fact, there's at least one real one at Powers.
Okay.
Just something to be aware of, and if they say there's none, there still might be some, just talk to the demo guy about being cautious, there's some interesting stuff in that thing.
One of the first questions, the architect.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sure. Any other questions for Steve? If not, we'll move on to administrative, very important, with Mike Molna.
Okay, a few, a few quick items, uh, first, I'm gonna thank the board for looking at item 14F, which is the contract for, with the College Board to provide PSATs for ninth and 10th graders next year in the National American Scholarship Qualification Test for, uh, juniors, um, again, diverting funds from a program that we're eliminating to, you know, something, a new educational option, opportunity for students, and again, providing that for all, for those students, you know, and no cost to parents during a school day, and I just, very thank the board, I think it's a great move for Amherst and our district and our students, so thank you for that, I think that's great. Also, speaking of diverting funds, every year, we have to, of course, set aside funds for many different programs and resources, but one of the ones we had recently was, was set aside funds for college credit plus textbooks that the state says the district has to pay for when students go out to take those courses at a college/university. We also had to set aside funds for online options for some of our students to take online schooling instead of attending, for example, Steel High School. Well, how, most likely because of, um, hosting so many courses here, our students taking courses here, the, the costs for those textbooks, if they went out to the college, was greatly reduced, and so were our online options, because a lot of our students are attending school here in Amherst, because all the great things are happening. So we were able to save a lot of money in those two areas specifically, um, and I was able to pull those together by the end of the year, and knowing how important technology is right now in use of students' hands, was able to, uh, purchase 18 Chromebook cards for 5th through 8th grade, uh, for next year. So next year, we will have one-to-one technology in students' hands in math, 3rd through 8th grade, and one-on-one technology in every ELA classroom, English classroom, 3rd through 12th grade. So it was a kind of a surp, not a surprise, but it was something I was looking to do next year, but able to, again, uh, take the cost savings that we worked so hard to do every single year in all those different areas, and pull it together now to do that, you know, um, was a great thing. Plus, also, Mr. Sarris gave us a little bit of money from current improvement funds, technologies, that was helpful also. So that's just a, a nice bonus, that those Chromebook cards should be in this, uh, teacher's hands by the end of this school year, again, in preparation for next school year, so that's just a great thing. Also, I wanna point out a few teacher, uh, kudos, um, Mommy Schools came here to visit this past week, they, they were looking at a new, a high school ELA English program, and they, they know that we, uh, adopted Pearson's My Perspectives last year, and we're implementing it this year for the first year. And so they wanted to come visit, and I just wanna thank, uh, a few teachers here at High School, Laura Brogan, Kelly Massa, Natalie Hostetler, and Jan Personder. They hosted Mommy's teachers to come visit the classrooms and observe the new program along with the technology that they have, and, uh, Mommy was just ecstatic with the visit, um, our teachers did a phenomenal job, they were very, very grateful for allowing them to come here to visit. And I just wanted to point out, you know, Laura Brogan had already had our students assigned in this space here, so when they came to visit, that was the first space we, um, visited, and she had her class in the fourth-class race rooms, they were working on their projects, taking some assessments, um, and it was just, it was a phenomenal experience for them, and they were very grateful. Um, and just to point out, at the same time, when we were doing that, Mark Coaster was hosting Apple, they had a, uh, professional development for other school districts in our active learning classroom right here at the same time, and Ohio State was presenting right here in, um, in the presentation area. So again, those kind of things happen every week here, and it's just amazing that, that those things are going on here in Amherst, so we just great, thank you for that. And then tomorrow, just to let you know, Amy Jackson is going down to, um, Idea Stream to, uh, she's doing a, um, a spee, a speech on effective integration of innovative technology in the middle school classroom with the Sviros that you know, we've seen before recently, um, so she's doing that down Idea Stream as a 2017 Innovative Educator Presentation. So she's hosting, uh, technology supervisors and other educators from around northeast Ohio, she's gonna be one of the presenters tomorrow and to the whole group, so, uh, Mark and I are going to, to support her, just wanted to share with that with the board, we're doing some great things in the future.
That's all I have. Any questions for her?
A question for some, uh, students that can apply, or, or, are able to go to summer school at community, uh, college, um, with their grades for three years or so, discount, can they do that in the summer, or does it just have to be during the school year?
Uh, for college credit plus?
Yeah.
Yeah, students can take college credit plus courses during the summer. We're involved in that, and we, we do pick up the textbook costs for summer as well.
Okay. Don doesn't like to do that.
So it is an option for students all across the state.
In re, may I?
Sure.
In regards to the presentation that Amy's going to be doing, is that something that we should be submitting to OSBA to be doing a workshop on this fall? Because I know they're always looking for some things, and I think some of the workshops... And some, some of the workshops that are listed are not nearly as dynamic as that.
Yeah.
Okay? Except for some of them, which we all have.
Yes.
So I would certainly encourage, Mike, that we submit that so that she could present at, or someone could present from the school to do a workshop one day at the conference in November. I have one more thing for Mike.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I am assuming that, Mike, you're involved with the purchase of the mini iPads for Powers, since it's with, uh, Apple, I'm assuming, with their iPads, I know we've had some great negotiating power, we've done last year, and we've been doing some things, so hopefully, we're gonna be able to get more bang for our buck, uh, or more instruments for our bucks, uh, from that perspective, since we, they have been so kind, and we've been so generous to them in leasing and trading in what we've done with that $13,500 or $479.
Yeah, we, we do get educational discounts, and Mark Coaster works with them quite a bit. Also, and I like Mark for the Chromebook cards, you know, purchase such a large volume, um, we work static, when we purchased the 10 Chromebook cards last year, uh, the cost of around $240, $250 per Chromebook, um, well, the company we were working with, um, a few weeks ago, was the same cost, so we went back, when I kind of brought the money all together, Mark Coaster went back and got the Chromebooks down to about $205. So we were, you know, we're almost able, we were almost able to pull out, you know, two cards for every, you know, three cards for the setup, too, and so, um, kudos to Mark Coaster for working with those companies as well, and getting a lot of technology in the students' hands.
Great.
Great. Okay, thank you, Mike.
JBS, I'm sure that if you've been following the news at all today, that you heard that there was a shooting accident this morning at the JBS. However, it was not student-related, okay? That was the big to-do. It was a Rocket River Police Officer who was in the shooting range, which is not part of the JBS. It was on the JBS property, he was there doing some shooting. His gun accidentally went off, he was light flighted by helicopter. So all of those questions have been referred to the sheriff's department. And I know media has been hovering over all morning trying to get back there, even though it wasn't anything to do with the student. The shooting range has been there for a long time, it's where a lot of police and sheriffs and everybody practice and there doesn't want to train. So as you hear that on the news, I'm sure it's TV, or you've seen it on social media already today, because we have been getting updates all day long about that, but it had nothing to do with any student. It was strictly, it was a Rocket River Police Officer. And so everybody from the school is fine. You know, it's been there for years, and no one else is permitted to use it except law enforcement people. So everyone is aware of that, so just wanted to put some rest to that, okay? Otherwise, we're moving into competition time at the JBS, which is always an exciting time for all of the students there. So they will start, you know, they're doing some of those competitions, they're involved in those competitions, trying to move on to state, national competitions from that perspective. So that's where we are. The greenhouse sales for spring will be beginning next week, I believe. I think I pulled that out, as we posted it up a couple of times, pointing one that'd be interested in that. Do you have any questions or anything that you would like me to try to, try to flag to?
I just wanted to mention the JBS recognition ceremony, like the graduation in the year is coming on May 19. 9 o'clock at the Rang Palace Theater.
Anybody's welcome to go to that. If you're planning on going, let me know, and we'll make sure that you can be on site and use as desired.
Any questions for Rex?
My tips there are here.
It's great. Not one of them on, thanks Rex. Any other to report, Steve?
No.
Okay, we'll go with the personnel recommendations then.
Yes, as the board is aware, April is a big month in regards to contracts for our teaching staff. And a number of recommendations there, resignation, appointment, contracts. And I know the board's had an opportunity to review these prior to this meeting. I think most everything here is fairly self-territory and routine for this time of year. I did want to mention, I think we want to handle items B, B separately. So at this time, I would like to recommend approval of items 13A through 13AA.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I would just indicate that all of the Ingle names that are on there are no relation to me. So therefore, I will be voting on those, I, they are not related to me in any way.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Sappa?
Aye.
Mr. Ingle?
Aye.
Mr. Candycar?
Aye.
Mr. Yakabose?
Aye.
At this time, we'd like to recommend approval of item 13B, B.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ingle?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Candycar?
Aye.
Mr. Sappa?
Mr. Steve?
Mr. Yakabose?
Aye.
Educational recommendations?
Yes, six items. I did want to mention one thing, again, I know you've had an opportunity to review these items ahead of time. Item C finalizes our agreement with Cleveland State for commencement for this year. But I also did want to mention that this remained indicated to me on Friday that from what we have been told, that commencement there next year should not be a problem. So we should be able to go for at least one more year. And they also went on to say that there is even some question now, I guess, as to whether the building will be torn down at all. So I don't know where all that's at. I guess the, you know, conversations are ongoing, but he did give some reassurance that at the very least, we should be good to go through at least 2018. So did want to mention that. And would like to recommend approval of items 14A through 14B.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ingle?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Sappa?
Aye.
Mr. Candycar?
Aye.
Mr. Yakabose?
Aye.
Item 15, Steve?
Yes, and finally, I would like to recommend approval of these four business recommendations, items 15A through 15B.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second? Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Sappa?
Aye.
Mr. Ingle?
Aye.
Mr. Candycar? Mr. Yakabose?
Aye.
Before we take the motion to executive session, just want to comment again regarding the bond rating. One of the things they were impressed with is the fact, we explained to them how Hamas Software is using the five-year business plan, and we've been doing it for 20-some years now. That seemed to impress those guys. If we, if you listen to all the things going on here tonight, you know, Mike's presentation, all the other ones, it's all part of this whole collaborative plan that we have, we've put together year after year after year. And they made comment, they were, one of the positive things that they looked at us was the fact we had very sound business practices in how we manage our operation and our business. So they were very impressed with that, so it's a good thing. Other districts don't do that stuff. Anything going unmentioned, of course, okay? All right, having said that, I'll entertain a motion, go to executive session to discuss the appointment. The appointment of public employees with no action to be taken. I guess that's what it says, right? All right, with no action taken afterwards. Mark made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sappa? Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Candycar?
Mr. Ingle?
Aye.
Mr. Yakabose?
Aye.
I am then five thirty.
Thank you all.